Good morning, glasses. Lost my glasses. You're not to that and so I lost. Did my glasses?
Lost it.
Lost my glasses.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Or at least we'll put the volume on here.
I lost my glasses.
Hi Francesca, how are you?
You guys know the chairman is not coming in tonight, right? So I'm filling in tonight. Hope you guys don't mind.
Perfect.
Not because I'm not be doing.
Why would we ever mind then?
No, not as good as Mr. Perrin.
You do very well and we're grateful for your efforts. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
How is everyone this fine Tuesday, Monday, Monday? Staying warm?
I'm good, sir. How about you?
I'm great. I'm relieved, I'm happy.
I'll try to beat my record from last time to make a quick one.
There's no reason to do anything other than what's required.
I'll do that as well, yeah.
It's all that's necessary. But I think you're right. We do have a nice night ahead of us, I think, so. Francesca, did we hear from anyone else tonight? It was just Gary that was unable to attend?
No, only Chairman Perrin.
Chairman Perrin, okay, great.
You better tell us we're gonna not get into. Can you email her and see what happened?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi Dennis.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Callahan, hello, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Dennis.
No, it's evening now.
Evening, yes, it is evening.
Can't see ourselves.
Yes, it is.
You look like you survived the last couple of weeks unscathed.
Barely, yes. Partially unscathed.
Okay.
Vice Chair, how do you want to handle this? I can still do the clerk's duties or are you gonna have Dennis do it if we want to do the?
Oh, it doesn't matter, whichever people prefer, you know.
I'm perfectly fine done with you taking the clerk's duties. If that's not.
We usually do it when we're live, so we usually move up a chair.
That's true, that is true.
If you want to handle it, Dennis, feel free.
Well, I could give it a go.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
I wore my tie tonight because I'm preparing for when we go live.
Well, every time we go live, you're always the one that's highlighted on the big screen.
Not always, not always.
Mostly.
Well, not tonight.
You're the best looking of the bunch there, Dennis, so.
Well, I thought that I'd just wear the tie. I even, you know, put a shirt on with cufflinks because I'm getting ready.
You do look sharp, Mr. McCarthy. I do see you. You do look sharp.
You know, it's all about, it's all about the look. It helps, it helps with the stuff that you forget to say.
Fran, is Jessica gonna be joining us or no?
Uh, yes, she will.
Okay.
Francesca, I sent an email. I don't know if you responded to it. I haven't checked about the project on Gorm Street, if they've submitted any other materials to support their revised site plan?
Yeah, I did respond and they did not.
Okay, maybe Chairman, Vice Chair Peck, you could just kind of ask them about the fact that their application states from eight to six parking and their site plan only shows four parking spaces. So their application doesn't match their revised site plan.
Yes, we can definitely do that, Mr. McCarthy.
All right, LTC is up.
Good to see you, George.
It's not us. It's school committee.
Well, they do rank maybe a little higher than us.
Yeah, so what I end up doing, sometimes LTC will contact me and they will say that there's another meeting. Usually it's a school committee meeting on the same night and I record them and send them afterward to LTC.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Segliano. If everyone's all set, we'll get started tonight. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to City Blow's Zoning Board of Appeals, a public meeting for January 25th, 2021. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the meeting will not occur in person and we're all joining via telephone or Zoom virtually. We'll just start with the agenda under continued business, ZB-2020-54. A variance, the applicant is Joseph and Dennis McQ. The property is located at 24 West Chester Street. Joseph and Dennis McQ have applied to the zoning board of appeals to construct a second story addition at 24 West Chester Street. The property is located in the suburban neighborhood, single-family zoning district and requires branch relief under section 5.1 or relief from the maximum FAR requirement and all other relief required under below Zordon ordinance. Is Mr. or Mrs. McQ on this evening?
Yes, we are. Can you hear us?
Yep.
Yes, good evening, sir. Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Joseph McQ and Denise McQ at 24 West Chester Street.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. McQ. Could you just tell us a bit about your project this evening?
We're just adding on to the bedroom, a second floor addition, just to widen the bedroom on the second floor.
Okay, thank you. We'll just open up to the public hearing portion of this for this agenda. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor, hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. And if any other members see anybody's hands or anyone on the Zoom call, please let me know as well. All right, so we'll open up to the to the board for questions and comments. The chair recognizes member Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Peck. I I actually like the idea, I think, when you came here the last time. You know, there was certain pieces missing, but I like the floor plan. I think your recent submissions would only enhance the property and property value and the neighborhood. So I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Narojo, member Narojo, Mr. Narojo.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Peck and everyone else. So last time we met, we were supposed to get a a floor plan, right? And a bigger floor plan. Because is that the case?
Yeah, my wife submitted, excuse me, she submitted a floor plan.
Fran has it.
Fran has it.
Oh, so Fran, you sent it via email. Is it part of the?
They're on the website right now. They're on the website, yep.
So I mean, I looked at the application, you know, the FAR was non-conforming before. So based on that, I don't think I don't think there is adding another 200 square feet would cause any, we're going from point three five to point four. I mean, we're supposed to be at point three five and we're at point four. Is that correct? Point four three? So, and I think it was, it was non-conforming before, although I don't, I don't see what the FAR was before. The application didn't say what it was before. But in my opinion, you know, since it was not conforming, I have no objection to granting relief to the applicants.
Thank you, Mr. Narojo. Thank you, sir, for your comments. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. To the applicant, thank you for providing the updated site plan. I do see, it makes things a lot clearer from the last time. You know, we had a little minimum of what we were dealing with and there was a portion of the application that was missing, specifically the variance supplement and thank you for providing that as well. So now we have an understanding exactly what we're dealing with. And based on the recent submissions, I really didn't have a problem with this the last time either, but it makes things a lot more clearer and makes it more easy and confident for me to support this project. One thing, I do have a note from the last meeting as a potential condition. I don't know if it was member McCarthy that brought it up or one of the other board members of the FAR be no more than 0.42, but I'm looking that what's being provided is 0.43 as the, based on the site plan. If that's a condition, maybe member McCarthy or whoever else brought it up can elaborate on it. Even if we can make that condition to 0.43, I would never. That's, but thank you again for providing the submissions and we'll be able to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Great segue to Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir, for comments, questions?
Sure, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions on the elevations and the site plan, but it is a lot easier to understand what you're trying to do here, especially with the detail that's presented on the site plan. So thank you for providing that for us. On the elevation, you show in the family room two doors. So your intent is to provide doors from the family room that go out to the yard, is that correct?
Well, the family room that has doors now, that's the first floor existing.
Okay.
The second floor is just in addition to the bedroom, so it won't have any doors to speak of.
In the elevations, I think you show no windows on the side that faces your neighbor from the family room, although I think that those are existing today.
Yes.
Well, they show the bottom floor, but the addition will not have any windows.
Oh, I stand corrected. So we don't have any windows above, but we have the windows that are currently there on, but the first floor really stays as is.
Exactly.
Great, okay. All right. And I think we're going from a current FAR of point four zero to point four three. Is that correct, Fran?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
I believe we documented in the comments that the current FAR is point four zero, which exceeds the zoning for that area of point three five. So currently we're exceeding it by point oh five and we're now adding to that to go to point four three. So we're exceeding it by point oh eight, which to me is, you know, less of a problem where the footprint doesn't changes and the height of the building doesn't really change in comparison to the building mass. So we really aren't having a big impact on the neighborhood as I see it. But I still would like Sean to continue with that condition that we hold it there because we are exceeding the zoning FAR in that neighborhood. So I'd like to see if we could, you know, I know the last time that was point four two, we're gonna say point four three, I think, today because that's what you documented. And I'd like to see that as a condition. But I think that it fits in. You know, it kind of surprises me that Fran, we have zoning that doesn't keep up with, I think, things that is somewhat common sense, but that's what we're here for, to understand where that needs to be modified. And so I think this variance should be granted. So I support it.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for your comments. The chair recognizes, is member Briar here this evening?
Yes, he is.
Go ahead, Mr. Briar. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The added detail provided makes the picture much clearer. As I indicated at the previous meeting, it appeared as though the dimensions of the proposed addition essentially mirrored the existing footprint. And as a result, I'll vote in favor of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briar. You know, I agree with my colleagues in terms of what you're trying to do, Mr. and Mrs. McQ. You know, it's we're trying to have a little more living space with the addition added on and, you know, from our previous meeting, we just asked it for kind of a more, more of the few aspects that's required. So we appreciate, I know I appreciate and my colleagues appreciate all the updated plans and information, documents, you know, like my colleagues, I don't have any objections. I think it would fit in well with the neighborhood and, you know, it'd be a nice little addition for you as well and, you know, only upgrades and improves the neighborhood and the city probably as a whole. So I have no objections. So hearing all the comments and from everybody, there's only one condition. If Mr. and Mrs. McQ, you have no other comments, we can go forward with a vote. If you wanted to add anything else before we voted?
No.
No.
All right, hearing no other comments or questions, we'll move to a motion for the vote for the variance.
For you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2020-54 for variance for 24 Winchester, West Chester Street for variance for relief under section 5.1 for maximum FAR that it has one condition that the variance has is that the FAR not exceed point four three.
Can we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Second, remember Proko, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve a condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve a condition.
Member Briar.
Approve with conditions.
Member Proko.
Prove it conditions.
Member Narojai.
Approve with conditions.
All right, Mr. and Mrs. McQ, you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck with your project. Thanks for coming out this evening and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well. Moving on to our next agenda item, under continued business, it is ZBA-2020-56, a variance. The applicant is the Nelson Group. The property is located at 610 Gorm Street. The Nelson Group has applied to the zoning board of appeals to redevelop the existing building at 610 Gorm Street into a four-unit residential structure. The building currently has three residential units and one vacant commercial unit. The subject property is located in the urban neighborhood mixed-use zoning district and requires site plan review approval per section 11.4 to expand a residential structure with more than three dwelling units, special permits approval per section 12.1D for the use and a variance per section 6.1 for relief from off-street parking requirements. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, I am, sir. John Bavuso from the Nelson Group.
Good evening, sir. Did you just tell us about your project and then you have some updated plans and documents for us? Actually, let me just get in real quick to a question I think a few of us had in terms of the updated plans. So the new, the new site plan shows four spaces. And it's, well, could you talk a little bit about your plan and then the updated plans and the relief you're seeking for the parking as well, sir?
Sir, I hope you've all had a chance to look at the updated plans. It was a chore getting them all in. I apologize for the delay. We recently acquired this building in the condition it's in. We would like to make the best use of it. Current standards, make it look nice, right? Make it usable. Something that's going to be attractive to the city and fit in. So the plans itself are to take off the garage that was attached to the building as it's no longer usable than any that will decrease our footprint of a lot. The lot itself is small, the building occupies most of it. Going by the zoning regulations for a parking space, which is eight feet by 18, we cannot get more than four of them on there. As the plan shows now, we may even have to increase the curb cut by two more feet. Now, we've checked it off on the computer. We think it will fit in like it is. We had hoped to increase the green space on the property and clean the whole site up. I mean, there's a large pile of dirt in the back. There's a hot top apron around the building. We'd like to take that out, level it down, put in some plantings, put a rain garden at the back and side perimeter of the garden for the downspouts to drain it to control the rainwater coming off of the roof. Again, we are decreasing the building. We think that a fourth residential unit in this area it would provide much-needed housing. So we specialize in taking, I don't want to say blinded, but distressed properties, fixing them up, making them look nice and providing safe, affordable housing. So these are our plans. We hope to go forward with it. I did go in front of the board a couple of weeks ago. They wanted me to come back to the zoning board, of course, and see if you gentlemen could come up with an answer on the parking situation. I understand parking site, but I've checked with the neighbors around. There's, I cannot find any available parking spaces within 300 feet of the building for sale or lease. We're asking your help to develop this building and make it look nice. You know, it would be only four parking spaces, which is one per unit. We have no other room to fit another one in. That's it in a nutshell, really. I hope you like what we've drawn.
Thank you, sir, for the summary and updated information about your project. So now we're gonna go to the public hearing part of the portion for the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor, hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. We'll open up questions, comments from the board now. The chair recognizes member Narojai, Mr. Narojai, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, so looking at the plans, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm trying to understand, how many bedrooms per unit that you have in there?
Two bedrooms per unit, sir.
Okay. And you have tried to look for leased parking around the area and none is available?
That's correct, sir. The only neighborhood, again, we were limited to 300 feet. The only neighborhood that had a parking space was Johnstone Supply. So, and they, you know, we're not willing to lease out parking spaces. At the time, I thought we had to have a deeded space, but the planning board informed me that it could be a leased space. But again, we're looking for four parking spaces. That's, you know, that's a fair amount of land.
Yeah, I mean, I looked at your, I looked at your site plan. I see you have a green space for snow storage, so that's good. You have an area for trash barrels, so that's good. I think I would approve of the application if you can confirm that you're gonna maintain four spaces. I don't think we should, you know, you talked about increasing the curb cut and, you know, there's a chance that those parking spaces might reduce, but I think nothing less than four, going less than four would be a little bit unfavorable. So I'm willing to consider to approve this if we maintain the four.
Oh, it would absolutely be no less than four and we hope not to increase the curb cut. We don't want to impair on-street parking for the other neighbors. We're trying to make this as low impact to the neighborhood as we can. We can easily fit the four legal spaces on the site.
Yes, so Mr. Vice Chairman, I would be in favor of granting some relief if we maintain four spaces, or less than four.
All right, thank you, Mr. Narojai, for your comments, sir. The chair recognizes member Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Sorry, sir, you're muted. I can't hear you.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Narojai, for your comments. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
And I apologize for that. I just want you to reiterate. I think you said that there was portion, the back of the property that you were going to demolish?
Yes, sir. It's actually on the central AV side of it. If you look at the site plan, you'll see the pedestrian crosswalk and signal. That 12 by 18 portion of the building is actually a garage.
Okay.
It's, it has not been used in years and with the crosswalk and light signal, you could not access the door. So we're gonna take that down, you know, hot top it, add some green space against it, use that as the fourth parking space.
Okay, so that will be the fourth parking space?
Yes. It comes in off a central AV into the driveway to a left turn into the parking spot. But to do that, we had to move the other three forward closer to the building. They still meet all of the recommendations and the requirements of the setbacks.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, um, I, I, if you don't mind, I may come back for additional questions, but I, I think you answered what I was concerned about for now. Yeah. Uh, I'll pass for now.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. Um, the chair recognizes, um, Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Matt, for your speaking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm referring to the memorandum dated December eighth, twenty twenty. It was provided for the board at your initial appearance. And it indicates that you initially were proposing six off-street parking spaces.
That's
Are you stating that, are you stating that that is no longer achievable?
That's correct, sir. At, at the time, I did not realize that there was also a three-foot setback from the street as well as the building. So, um, and we could not achieve that. We just do not have the square footage on the site. If we went stacked parking, you know, one behind the other, then we could get it. But, but then that would be a, um, problem with if tenant A parked behind tenant's B vehicle, you know, it would just turn into a mess with the parking situation. So for the eight by eighteen conforming spaces with the setbacks all the way around, we can only get four of them on the site.
So you're committed to those four spaces?
Absolutely. I wish we had more room, but we really don't.
Yeah. I wish you did too, because this property is in desperate need of your investment.
Absolutely.
And, and, um, you know, as, as someone who, who drives by that particular site several times a day, I, um, I want to lend any assistance I can to beautifying that, that building. Now, as it currently sits, how many commercial units were, were in the building?
Uh, one, sir.
Okay. And your proposal is to eliminate commercial units, correct?
That's correct.
So we would now have a, a new building, uh, all residential with four two-bedroom units?
That's correct.
All right. So this all boils down to, uh, whether we can, uh, provide you the relief for those four required parking spaces.
That's correct, sir. And I'd like to point out, as it sits now, the building did not, did not have enough parking. Even if the commercial space remained, we would not have the
Yeah, that, yeah, that's where I was leading with my questions. I, I happen to think that the, I mean, easy for me to say, but I think the benefits of rehabbing this building or repurposing this building outweigh the, uh, the pain in the neck finding those spaces will be. Uh, I would be willing to grant the relief. Uh, this building is a, is a terrible eyesore. And, uh, I, I'd, I'd like to see it rehabilitated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Briere, for, for your comments, sir. Uh, the chair recognizes, um, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I have a couple of questions. Um, but I, I agree with my fellow, um, members that the city would be well-served to, um, find a way to have this application variance approved because this building, um, I think is in sort of need of some rehabbing by a group as capable, I think, as yourself. So, um, I, I, um, heard you say that the site plan, um, has a rain garden proposed somewhere, but I don't see that on the site plan that you provided.
It's at the perimeter of the building, sir, in the back and on the, from central lab, it would be on your right side. We incorporated that as part of our three-foot buffer. We plan to take out the asphalt berm that they had put around there, which is covered with dirt and weeds anyways, and put a raised planter in there and wrecked our downspouts into that. So adding some green space and hopefully containing some of the runoff onto the site.
Okay. Um, your site plan doesn't, doesn't adequately show the grading that currently exists between the property line along Central Street and the building foundation. Um, are you expecting to build a retaining wall at that green space? Because right now, there's probably two to two and a half feet of grade change there. And I hardly think that you intend to slope the parking so that all of that water would then pour onto Central Street. Is that your intent?
And not at all, sir. We absolutely would build some type of a, a raised bed, uh, retain, slight retaining wall, or we think more of as a raised planter. So I know the grade is high there, but most of it is actually a pile of dirt that is covered over with weeds. But it is, there is a slope going towards the street, I agree, and we would certainly build some type of a retainer around there. Mostly we use pavers, you know, blocks, the decorative pavers.
I, I, I'd like to see you develop the site plan a little further as a condition um, to help us understand how the grading would work for that rain garden. And then also to show the limits of the proposed green space snow storage in the upper north corner, northeast corner.
Yep.
Because right now you just have a, a note, but you don't indicate how the pavement and where the, it starts.
Correct. Absolutely, we could do that, sir. We're, and honestly, we're not quite sure exactly where it'll go and we'll have to map it all out. You know, the engineer that is working on it has done a lot with the site that's there, but we would definitely be able to do that.
Right now, the rendering that you have presented shows that as a paved area in that corner green space. So I'd like to, that basically make sure that we achieve a green space somewhere to mitigate drainage issues on the site. And maybe even allow some of that paved area to slope to that, if that makes sense, but that's something your engineer will have to develop because you're responsible, I think, to not add any water flow to the street, right?
That's correct. Um, we'll try, sir. Again, there is a little bit of a slope there, but if we could level off and aim it back towards our building, we certainly would.
Okay.
And we hope to keep it all. And, and again, we know that snow storage pace is small. We normally remove the snow from our properties. And we have a, a bobcat in a truck. We come in and haul it out because a sufficient snow, there isn't room there to keep it. So we would remove the snow.
Is there any intent for any fencing? Right now, there's a chain link fence that looks like it's had better days.
It certainly has.
And so along that northeast side, is there any intent to change that to something else or to?
We would, we'd be glad to change it. We haven't talked to the neighbor yet. You know, we'd like to reach out to everybody first and say, we would like to change this. You know, we wanted to determine ownership of it and, and have everybody on board with us before we, you know, they may think it's their fence. We don't want to tear it down without talking to them.
But you could always, as a worst-case scenario, provide your own fence as a screening device. Um,
Absolutely. But again, it's a tight, it's a tight spot, and if the owner had no opposition, we would change the fence.
Right. No, it is a tight spot. I agree with you. But as you're modifying grading along that portion, especially in that back area where the soil is sort of up against half of the fence.
It is.
I know it.
I only get there, yes.
I was kind of shocked that the soil is being held back by a chain link fence, but in any event, that's the way it is.
Yeah.
I'd love to see some fencing developed, um, and that that be added to the revised site plan. And in, in addition to that side, I think screening, your intent is to have the trash barrels or the trash slash recycling receptacles, as I would like to call them.
Yes.
Uh, placed along Central Street. And I think, um, there's a fully maintained chain link fence there as well. It would be nice to have some fencing developed there for screening. Um, is your intent that the trash receptacles would be brought through the parking area to the curb cut and that the vehicle that removes the waste would be coming in through the curb cut? Is that your intent?
I, I imagine that the tenants would bring the receptacles onto the sidewalk on pickup day. Uh, I'm not familiar with how low does their pickup and recycling?
I don't, I don't believe you would, Fran, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think anything beyond a three family is required to have their own service for trash and recycling. Is that correct?
Um, that's a good question. I'm actually not sure.
That's my understanding. And so I think you're going to find that the city is not your source for removing trash and recycling, that that's a
I think every time I come here, Mr. McCarthy, if that's the case, we would certainly hire a contractor to come out and haul the trash.
And I would expect you not to be doing that through the sidewalk portion, but through the curb cut portion?
Of course.
Right. So maybe putting a fence along that sidewalk portion to screen it from view from Central Street? So is that, is that a, is that a reasonable request?
Oh, absolutely. And of course, I, we would take it through the curb cut, but not leave them into the curb cut. You know, we don't want to right?
Right. Um, and then, um, I think the application that you provided needs to state what your intent is, because right now, the application states that you're looking for relief for two parking spaces?
Yes. At, at the time when we first looked at the plan, we thought we had enough for six. We've come to realize it was only four, and I'd be glad to update the application.
I think that it's a condition that would be something I'd like to see done so that we're all clear with what we're approving tonight, that that application be updated to provide relief for four spaces and not two.
Of course.
Um, I find, when I look at the site, that there's up to four parking spaces available on the street. Um, and so without snow emergencies, there's potential, I think, for four parking spaces to be available on the street for this property, which, to me at least, gives us, or gives me a sense that there's an avenue to get to eight spaces in the event that that's required. I understand that you're in certain walking distance from the train station, and the intent is that people will be using less than the required parking. But in the event that eight is required, there's four onsite and four street parking spaces that are aligning the perimeter of your corner site. So I kind of feel good about that.
Yeah, good.
One way to be
Could I ask you a question, sir? So are you saying that we could get off-street or on-street parking?
No.
No, it's just open to the public?
Yes, it is open to the public, but your property comes with frontage that can support four spaces on the street.
Oh, absolutely.
So that's a nice thing to have. Not, not many, not many properties do have that much. You were a corner lot, you, I think, have that available. So, um, but I would like to see a condition, um, requiring a six-month administrative review um, in the event that we find that neighbors of, are seeing that your parking requirements are beyond what you're expecting, and it causes a lot of stress for the, um, the neighborhood, that there's an opportunity to come up with an alternate solution, um, if you're, um, accepting of that condition?
Oh, absolutely, sir. We, before we start any job, we go out and talk to all of the neighbors. That's one of the reasons we're trying. We do not want to increase the curb cut. Every time I've been to the property, that parking space aligned with Central Street is full.
I, I, I guess what I'm saying more so is that in the event that you, um, have tenants that take the four units, that each have two bedrooms, and worst-case scenario, each of those two bedrooms have four cars because there's two people in each bedroom and they each have a car. And suddenly your property has brought to the neighborhood sixteen cars versus, you know, and you only have four parking spaces. That's quite a bit of stress for the neighborhood to have twelve parking spaces that people have to find. So that's the point of this month's review is to just to understand what actually is taking place versus what was proposed. So.
I understand completely.
And that's painting the worst-case scenario.
Of course. And we try to rent to families, not, not by rooms. You know, we, we take care of our property, you know, to the best of our ability, and we're always there for it.
Sure.
We're here to be good neighbors. We're not, you know, flippers that are going to disappear.
You, you'd certainly come across that way, and I certainly hope that that's the case, and it looks like it's going to be a great project. And I'm really glad that you're looking at this site to improve the city. So I'm, I'm all for this, but those are my concerns, and I think if we can make those conditions, the other board members would support that. That's what I'd like to see.
Absolutely, sir.
Great. Very good. Well, I wish you the best of luck, and, um, it looks like a great project.
Well, thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for your comments, sir. Um, the chair recognizes, um, member Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I appreciate it. Um, I mean, I, I agree with my fellow board members as far as the renovation of the property. Uh, it, it looks like it's, it would be a great project, and especially be very helpful to, uh, you know, bring this, I guess you can call it daily dilapidated, uh, building, um, and beautify it to, uh, something, uh, more that, that'll be great for the neighborhood. Um, and it is a high-traffic area and where you're at, uh, as well. So I can understand the parking, the parking dilemma there. Um, and there isn't much to work with, but as Dennis pointed out, you do have some off-street parking. Uh, maybe alleviate some of that. My questions, though, with regards to, you said that the four units are supposed to have two bedrooms each, but I'm looking at the ground floor plans, and, I mean, you do have two bedrooms listed there, but you also have offices in each of those units. Um, I mean, so in essence, really, what we're really talking about could potentially be three-bedroom units.
It's Yeah, the original plan had four, which, you know, we didn't realize it until the building commissioner brought it up. And we would like to use that space for something, you know? We've enlarged the dining rooms on a couple of the units, and I don't know if the double-sized bedroom makes sense there. Um, we certainly keep an eye on the tenants, you know? If someone's stuck in that room, you know, and we found out about it, we would tell them, you cannot do that. It's not a legal bedroom. So we're still, the plans are still look in flux. We're trying to think what would be the best use of that space. Certainly not going to market it as three bedrooms. We could call it a den or an office or just take, have doors on the room, make it a wide-open play area or something. So.
I, I, I understand that. Again, I don't think that, and I, I don't think that that's something we can condition, um, that you can only market it as two bedrooms.
Well, we, we want to
I don't think that's something we, we, we have the authority to condition anyways. I think that would have to be signed by the building department. Um, in their, uh, in their purview, when they issue permits and stuff. But, um, the one thing I did find, I'm not going to say it's strange, but I can, I can understand what the intent was previously when it was previously trying to do it for bedrooms. On this, you have, um, unit four, you now have his and her bathrooms out in the hallway, uh, which is kind of, I don't know, seems kind of strange, but I mean, that's for a, you know, for a, uh, for a two-bedroom, two-bedroom unit, but, uh, I'm, I'm presuming that's from the previous, uh, commercial setting of the property, uh, probably, uh, um, you know, his and her bathroom, male, male, you know, male, female bathroom thing. Is that what, that was why there's two bathrooms in that?
I, I There's nothing inside of the building right now. Everything inside has been totally removed.
Yeah.
Initial designer, so we have hired a new architect and engineer that made these changes to the plans. Again, we're still looking at it. I know the two bedroom, the two bathrooms looks a little funny right there, but
I mean, I could see it. Yeah. I mean, just, and again, you guys, whatever the plans are, that's fine. I mean, I could see it even removing that office space, um, including that bathroom into a master bedroom out in the front. There's your two units right there, um, really, but, um, I don't know. I just found that, I just found it a little odd. So the, the, the two bathrooms in that, in, uh, unit four. And I could see like in unit three, you have two bathrooms, but the second bathroom is connected to the master bedroom. As a private, as a private bedroom, so a private, uh, private bath, which makes sense, um, a little bit, you know? Because you're seeing a lot of the, a lot of units of apartments, uh, units with master bedrooms that have their own personal bath, uh, attached to it.
You're correct. That's what we try to do, and we may, we may even make one of those bathrooms a half-bath.
Yeah.
You know, just for convenience or something.
Yeah.
Again, we're still looking at it, and we're trying to make the best use of the space.
Oh, no, absolutely. Again, and, um, no, I appreciate, uh, the efforts, and, you know, the renderings look great, too. Um, and, uh, thank you for providing me additional information. I just want to, uh, just as long as we make sure that we're clearly the number of units and bedrooms and, uh, the number of units and bedrooms and, uh, the parking spaces, uh, I, you didn't, um, I, I know you mentioned the, um, setbacks from the buildings, but I don't see it on the plan. So we would have to have some updated plans showing what the setbacks for the parking spaces would be from the building.
Three-foot buffer.
Yeah. But I didn't see that on the, I didn't see that on the updated site plan. I just, uh, and I think, Fran, I'm not mistaken. I think you brought it up as well, uh, that the updated site plans don't have, uh.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make sure that I, I thought it was there. I apologize. I'll make sure that's put on.
Yeah. I guess it's, yeah, a condition that we submit an updated, uh, site plan with, uh, showing the setbacks of the parking spaces from the building. Um, I guess then as well from the property line, just so, just so we know we're in conformity.
Yep, and the grading.
Yeah.
And just let me, let me say one other thing. As the landlord, we are responsible for how many people are in there. We don't want to have, you know, room rentals. That, that's not what we do. You know, we don't want to have our tenants bringing in sub-tenants, you know? We operate a clean business here. We don't want to have.
No, no, I totally understand. It's only, I was just, just, um, and, and I appreciate you working with the building commission, uh, commissioner to, uh, try to address these and, you know, getting the units down, which make, which seems to make sense, um, in this, in this instance, um.
Absolutely.
Having, having four units, having, uh, you know, four units on each, uh, four bedrooms in each unit on the bottom floor, um, seemed a little bit much. Um, and when I was looking at the plans, it was lessening actually more common area, if anything, um, in each of the units down to not much, not much in the living room, not much in the dining room. So now, but I'm now at the new, with the new plans, I saw you did extend that a little bit, which makes it a little bit more, uh, makes it a little bit more easy. But, um, that's what I, that's all I have. I mean, I, I can support this again. It's, it looks like it's going to be a fantastic project. Um, and I could support this along with the conditions that Dennis mentioned and also the one I mentioned as well. And I wish you the best of luck.
Oh, thank.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan, for your comments, sir. Um, you know, I, I just do want to just echo the, the comments of my colleagues. You know, why, why I do think, um, this building is, you know, been, been in dis, disrepair for quite a while and and this, this project actually will bring a lot of life back to it and, and, you know, housing and, you know, uh, it's always needed in the city. Um, it all, it all kind of comes together without kind of master plan, uh, for, for, for business and residential and, you know, um, uh, a vibrant economic city. Um, you know, I, I think the only concern that, that I, that I see, um, that some of the co-, uh, my colleagues commented on was par- parking as well. Um, you know, I, and I, I do think that, you know, the, the project itself, like Mr. Bear said, kind of outweighs, uh, the need for, for the parking. Um, wh- while you do have four parking on site, I, I also agree that you have, oh, you know, three or four off-street parking, which is kind of up for grabs, but you know, uh, it's, it's on your corner lot, so it, so you do have additional off-street parking, uh, on a kind of first, first-come, first-served basis for that property. Um, you know, I, and, and I do agree with, uh, all the conditions, uh, set forth by my, uh, colleagues, by Mr. McCarthy and, and Mr. Callahan, uh, especially the, the condition, uh, in regards to, um, that the six-month administrative review, you know, I, I, I do want to see once this, uh, project is up and uh, the, the units are, are rented out and there's people living in them, uh, I do want to see six months after that, after occupancy, um, what, you know, if there's any concerns in regards to parking or traffic or anything like that, or just increased, uh, parking. Um, but you know, in my, um, my experience with the Nelson Group, uh, Mr. Bafuso, uh, you, you guys run a professional outfit, uh, you know, you, you're very courteous and considerate to, to the, to the neighborhood, the neighborhood and, and, you know, always been a very good company, uh, doing, doing business the right way in the city, I, in my observation at least. Um, so I, I, I appreciate that and I'm sure my colleagues appreciate that as well. Um, but, but saying that, I think overall I can support this, um, petition. Um, you know, with, with the following conditions that we, we talked about already. Um, so with, with no other, if there's no other comments by, uh, my colleagues, we'll move to a, a vote on this petition.
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read the conditions that I have here based on the comments. Um, I think it was three conditions if I can just lump the site plan issues all together. Uh, the first one is that, um, first condition is to provide a site plan, a revised site plan to show a, any and all retaining walls required for the rain garden, uh, fencing at the trash recycling receptacles and east property line and limits, uh, and show the limits of the green space at the northeast corner as well as, um, the three-foot, um, uh, pervious buffer at the building and property line. That would be the first condition. And the second one would be revised, the application to state relief for four required spaces instead of two. And the last one is, um, that the, uh, variance is subject to a six-month administrative review for, uh, reduced parking. That make sense for everybody?
Um, could you just repeat the details? I have, um, revised site plan showing the grading around the retaining wall.
I'll go a little slower, Francesca. The first one is a long one.
Yeah, sure.
Site plan for, uh, to provide a site plan, revised site plan to show, um, any and all retaining walls at the rain garden. And then, uh, calmer fencing at, at trash receptacle, um, trash and recycling receptacles and then calmer to show, uh, uh, fencing at the east property line. And then the limits of the green space at the northeast corner. And then the last one is, um, and the, a three-foot pervious buffer at the building and property line.
Got it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy for that, sir. Um, with, with that, uh, uh, did you already read the motion, Mr. McCarthy? I'm sorry.
Go ahead with that. Um, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose a motion for ZB A twenty-twenty dash fifty-six for variances for six-ten Gorm Street. With the, uh, previously read, uh, three conditions.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Motion by Mr. McCarthy. Seconded by, can we have a second, please?
This is, uh, George. I second.
All right, uh, motion second by Mr. Proco. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Prove with conditions.
Member Briere.
Approved with conditions.
Member Proco.
Approved with conditions.
Member Niroge.
Prove with conditions.
Uh, Mr. Bafuso, you've been approved with conditions. Uh, we wish you the best of luck and thank you for coming out this evening, sir.
Thank you, and I would like to invite all the board members to drop by anytime during construction. You know, please, just come and see what we're doing. I think you'll be happy with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. You, you, you as well.
Thanks.
Um, moving on to our next, uh, item on our agenda, we're going on, we're going to new business now. Another new business, uh, we have ZB A dash twenty-twenty dash fifty-seven. It's a special permit. Um, the applicant is Margarita Saligwa. Apologies if I pronounced that wrong. Uh, the property is located at one-seventeen Rogers Street. Um, the applicant has applied to the zoning board of appeals to start a home occupation as a hairdresser at one-seventeen Rogers Street. The property is in the traditional neighborhood, two-family zoning district and requires a special permit under section four-point-three-point-four and for any other relief required under the zoning ordinance. Um, is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, we are. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair Peck and members of the board. For the record, my name is John Geary of the Law Offices Gary and Gary LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight representing the applicant Nora Zalulaga, who is, I believe, with us tonight as well. Uh, Nora is the owner of one-seventeen Rogers Street. Nora has been a hairdresser for the last forty-two years. She anticipates that she will con- continue to work as a hairdresser for the next four or five years before retiring. Um, however, due to circumstances out of her control, such as the COVID pandemic and, uh, rising rents at her place of lost employment, she can no longer see customers in the traditional fashion of, as a, at a hair salon. Um, and in order to continue to work and support herself, she is, uh, requesting a special permit pursuant to four-point-three-point-four for a home occupation service business, uh, in order to allow her to con- continue operating her hair salon business. One-seventeen Rogers Street is in a traditional two-family zoning district and contains approximately four thousand seven hundred and fourteen square feet of land. This particular neighborhood has a significant mix of single, two, and multifamily homes. There's also retail, commercial, and heavy industrial use very close by. If you've gone by the property at all, you'll note that the property is in, uh, very good shape, well-kept. Uh, prior to getting to this point, Nora had applied for a few different nursing home jobs as an in, in-house hairdresser, but the, the COVID situation shut down any of those opportunities pretty quickly. By, by way of background, Nora had applied for and received a special permit back in two thousand eight for this same property, same location, same property. The proposed hair salon at that time was, was significantly larger as she was proposing in addition to the property. Um, at the time, she did not use it. She found an alternative to operating from her home, so she did not take advantage of that special permit and it has since expired. As I mentioned, Nora is nearing her retirement age and only would, would, uh, see a few clients a day and only one customer at a time. Uh, the applicant understands that the special permit will expire in five years and she anticipates retirement in that timeframe. The, uh, criteria for a home occupation special permit, uh, requires that you meet certain thresholds. So number one, the proposed home occupation must be incidental and secondary to the use of the premises as a single-family residence with no offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, lighting, electrical interference, radioactive emissions, or environmental pollution associated with the use. The home occupation will not utilize any exterior storage or material or equipment and the applicant will register as a small business with the city. So the applicant meet, uh, meets all of those conditions. Number two, the business is conducted within the dwelling solely by the person occupying the dwelling as a principal residence, which is the case here, and there'll be no other employees other than the applicant, which is also the case. And finally, number three, there is no exterior indication of the business operating at the property, nor any variation from the residential appearance of the property. So in this case, again, there will be no addition to the property and the house, the, the single-family home will just, will look just as it does now, which is a very well-kept home. Uh, so in addition to meeting those conditions, uh, the issuance of a special permit in this case will not have any detrimental impacts to the neighborhood, nor will the issuance of the special permit result in any substantial derogation to the intent of the zoning bylaws. So we respectfully request, uh, approval for the special permit and happy to answer any questions from the board or the public. Thank you.
Uh, that, thank you, Councilor Gary, for that, um, summary of the project. Um, so now we'll, we'll move on to, um, the public hearing part of, of the meeting for this project. Um, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing now that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Uh, hearing now that portion of the public hearing is closed. Um, we're going to open up, question the comments, uh, from the board now. Uh, the, the chair recognizes, um, member Briere. Uh, Mr. Briere, the, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, Mark Pugil speaking, Mr. Chairman. No questions. This seems pretty straightforward. I'd like the, this woman to be able to continue with her livelihood. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Briere. Um, the, the chair recognizes, um, member Callahan. Uh, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, that's very great presentation there, Councilor. I really appreciate it. Laid out, uh, this is, uh, no, one of the very few ones of, uh, these home businesses that come before us and, uh, to lay out, laying out the criteria in that fashion was, was fantastic. So thank you very much for, for going through that. Uh, only thing I have, a couple of things I presume, and I, I'm presuming, you know, based on, uh, how the setup is, that, uh, pretty straightforward that, that, um, this, uh, Zalagga's, um, uh, business is only going to be generated by appointment only, correct? I mean, I'm sure it's not going to be.
That's correct. She sees, she'll see one customer at a time. They, just a few during the course of any given day. Uh, there'll be, there's plenty of parking there. If, if, if ever gone by the houses, you know, really more than a car in the parking lot, uh, in the driveway, that is. So yes, she'll see, she'll see one customer at a time. They generally don't overlap. So there's not a, there's not a customer inside and somebody waiting outside to come in.
Yeah, no, that, that makes, that makes total sense. And, um, I don't, is, is there any plan for signage at all? I don't, I'm going to guess.
None whatsoever. Not necessary.
Yeah, got it. So, no, again, so that, that, that's, that makes sense too. I just wanted to confirm that and, uh, again, there was a fantastic presentation. I appreciate, uh, laying it out. Um, I think this will be a great, uh, I, I have no issues with this. I think it'll be a great for, uh, Miss Zalagga to continue her profession, um, into her potential retirement years, or even, even if it's successful even for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. No, no further questions. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, thank you, Mr. Callahan, for your comments, sir. Uh, the chair recognizes, um, member McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you very much, um, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I just have a couple of questions, but I agree with my colleagues that this is, uh, a, a nice project that I can easily support. The property is very well-maintained. It looks like there is potential for four parking spaces currently on site. Is that correct?
Not necessarily, uh, Mr. McCarthy. There's, uh, you know, you could squeeze, uh, they're not, not legal, not four legal parking spaces anyway. You could probably squeeze, uh, two-by-two in tandem, but, but those aren't legal spaces.
What, what I'm, what I'm looking at from my, my opinion on Google Earth, especially within visiting the site, is that you could have uh, three deep on the far side and one off-street parking closest to the house as you arrive. Um, the curb cut seems to be wide enough to support two spaces from the steep side. Is that correct?
It's possibly, I would say, one space, one, one curb spaced, uh, on-street space. Um, you know, according to the site plan, with, with, what the surveyor did, it, it shows two legal spaces tandem. There's some extra room there between the lot lines is, you know, the, the pavement is basically from the edge of the house to the edge of the property. So there is some additional space there and, and some room for overlap if necessary, but we don't even see that that's going to be necessary.
I guess where I'm going with this is, is it possible to mark on the site customer parking at all? And indicate a spot specific for customers?
It's possible, but again, it's tandem parking. So, uh, you know, in all likelihood, Nora's car will be up in front towards the rear of the property and the customer would be closer to the street.
Right. Because I could imagine a scenario, worst case, is that she's got her car and then there's a customer having their haircut and there's a customer waiting potentially in their car somewhere as we have COVID people probably waiting in their car. And then there's a, so there's on, on-street parking, one space, one space off-street parking would be my hope if we could achieve that.
Yes. Nora, are you with us? Nora?
Yes, I am here, yes.
So Nora, what do you have in front of your house? And what do you have for a curb cut? Do, do people park, are the cars parked on the, uh, side of the street along the curb of your home?
People park on the side of the street, but no, no one of us own a car over here. I don't drive.
Oh, okay.
Has a car over here.
Okay. So, so, Mr. McCarthy, it's certainly possible to, to park in, in front of the house on the curb, along the curb.
Okay. Well, um, is it possible to have a spot designated for customer parking?
Yes, if that's, we can certainly. Yes, if that's, we can certainly do that. Again, it would be, it's a tandem spot, so it would just be, in all likelihood, that space closest to the street. If you're looking at the site plan, identified as space number one.
Yep.
I mean, we're happy to do that. She can put a sign there, customer parking.
I, I just feel that we'd be better served to be clear with that. So if that's agreeable to my fellow board members, like make a condition that there's a a identification as to off-street parking spaces being reserved for customers. I'm amazed and happy that handicap is being addressed here and that we have a handicap lift on the plan. So the intent is to have this accommodate handicapped people.
That, that's correct.
That's amazing. That is wonderful. I mean, that's a rarity, I think, in home services such as this, and so that's a major plus. And I think having that off-street parking space with all that pavement there would actually work out very well for someone who's handicapped to access the property, so. I'm thrilled. I think this is a great application, and I agree with the comments from the city that this is really close to the mixed-use district, and the impact on this, the current traditional two-family is minimal with this use, so I can support this. I'd just like to make that one condition that we indicate on the site plan, one customer parking space off-street.
Thank you. That's acceptable.
Great. Thank you very much. No further questions.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy, for your comments, sir. The chair recognizes member Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. And thank you, Mr. Gary, for, for that wonderful presentation. The one thing about this presentation is that you leave very little room for questions since you answer them all in advance. Other than, other than Mr. McCarthy's condition, I can, I can support this. I don't think it, you know, it would have any major or negative impact on, on the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Procop. The chair recognizes member Nirobe. Mr. Nirobe, the floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Vice Chairman, this petition seems to meet the special permit criteria. And one thing that fellow board member McCarthy mentioned, you know, this, this home is one home away from a traditional mixed-use, mixed-use, you know, district. So I have, and you know, the petition is only proposed to do this for five years, and based on the fact that she was granted a special permit in two thousand and eight, I think, you know, I've got no, I've no issue granting relief for this one, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Nirobe, for your comments, sir. You know, I, I do agree with my colleagues, you know, Council Gary, a great summary, great, you know, thought-out kind of presentation on what, what, what the site is or what the property is and what they're trying to do. You know, like, like my colleague said, you leave very little room for questions. You know, I, so I just have really comments. I really think this is probably the best use of a special permit in terms of, you know, it's, it's a property where it's, it's residential, but it had a use, a use of the actual home care business that you're trying to do now before, but it just lasts. And, you know, like, like you said in, in your narrative, you know, with, with the virus and all that, people have to be creative or, you know, businesses and people and everyone's going to, you know, suffer even more in terms of economics and, you know, potential for, for growth and revenue and all that. You know, so I, I don't want to belabor this, you know, I, I don't have any concerns. Like I said, I think this is something, to me, I feel like a great use of a special permit. This is what, this is what this kind of project is meant for when someone's coming to the zoning board, in my opinion, for relief, for a special permit, you know, to do a home care business, you know, for a short, for a short time too. It's not definite, it's only for, for the next five years or so. So I have no concerns. I wish, I wish the applicant the best of luck, you know, in her business, and hopefully she'll, she'll ride this out to the end, and it'll be very successful. So with that being said, we'll go to a motion, and Mr. McCarthy, you could take the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to make a motion for ZBA twenty twenty dash fifty-seven for a special permit for one seventeen Rogers Street to provide a home occupation for a hairdresser in a traditional two-family district with the assumption that the applicant provide one off-street parking space and indicate that either by signage or striping.
That's acceptable to the applicant.
Thank, thank you. Do you have a second by any members?
Mark, please, second to motion.
Thank you, Mr. Briere. A motion seconded by Mr. Briere. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Perrin, I mean, sorry, Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Briere.
Approve the conditions.
Member Procop.
Approve the conditions.
Member Niroge.
Approve the conditions.
Well, congratulations, Attorney Gary and Madam. You've been approved. Wish you the best of luck with, with your endeavor and your business.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item. Under other business, discussion with staff relating to material deadlines. Mr. Segliano or any members of the board, if you wanted to talk about any particular items or materials or anything we could talk about or not?
So at the last meeting, I saw, I wasn't present at that meeting, but I noted in the minutes that, and we've talked about this a little bit, I've spoken with member McCarthy about this a little bit, that you would like the applicants to submit their materials at least no later than Thursday so that you have time to review, which I totally agree with, and I'm on board with this a hundred percent. The only challenge is that, I guess I'm wondering what you'd like to do when applicants, because inevitably applicants are still going to send me things on Friday and on Monday, like documents kind of trickle in. And I can certainly reiterate to them and make it clear at the, at the outset while they're applying that we'd like things no later than at least two or three business days before the meeting. So that Thursday, if the meeting isn't a Monday. But I guess my question for you would be what you, how you'd like to move forward when applicants inevitably send me things more last minute.
So thank, thank you for that, Ms. Segliano. We did talk about that. You know, I, I don't know what, you know, how the other members feel. I, I do, you know, I do agree with all the comments we talked about last time, you know, Mr. McCarthy, Mr. Callahan, Chairman Perrin was there, and all the other members. You know, I, I think it's only fair, not just to the board, but like, like we talked about in the last, the last meeting or meeting for that, that materials get in in a timely manner, so that way we're not, we're also informed, but also the public can be informed. You know, because logistically, someone turns in materials at least by Thursday or Friday, then we, then we as a, you know, as, as an agency, as a city, we have to make sure they're available to the public as well. So we're not scrambling last minute, you know, it's, it's all in the best interest of everybody involved, the petitioners, the board, the city. So I guess those are just my comments. I, I think, you know, and, and, you know, I, I don't expect BPD to be like, no, we're not taking them. You know, I, I respect that, that responsibility on you, you know. And I, and I think as a board, you know, we should be like, well, you know, thank you for submitting the application now, but, you know, we're, we're taking it under advisement, but we, we could either continue it or, you know, not, not take it under review for the actual vote when it comes, comes to the actual petition on hand. But, but those are just kind of my thoughts as, as we talked about in the last meeting. So, you know, we, we can just open this up to discussions. You know, Mr. McCarthy, I don't know, you have any comments, sir?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I would suggest that the applicant be notified on Friday if they have an incomplete application and materials haven't been, incomplete meaning that the application materials don't meet the prerequisites, that they be notified that their, their application would be subject to a continuance as, as, as a, and I don't know if we state that they won't be on the agenda or if they're on the agenda, that there's a likelihood that the board will continue it because of the incomplete nature of the application. That would be my take on it. Any, any material that is beyond the prerequisites that's received at the last minute probably is not as, as critical, but anything that's a prerequisite that's received beyond Thursday midnight kind of thing, right? Really doesn't give the board a reasonable amount of time for review. And I think that that also, Mr. Van, you mentioned that, that the public doesn't have a chance to engage on the material as well. So it really should be something that we take as critical to a proper procedure, that the prerequisite materials are available, you know, no less than two business days prior to, or three, whichever the board uses, but that would be my take.
Um, I just. I just wanted to add, so for the agenda, we can't modify the agenda any sooner than forty-eight hours before the meeting. So that's a little bit tricky, and I'd like to stay away from modifying the agenda on that Thursday, Friday, I guess, timeframe, but I think that your idea of notifying the applicants and giving them reminders leading up to that Thursday that they need their materials in no later than that Thursday night is a good idea.
Fran, could it be that in doing so, give the applicant an option to say if they're not going to have this material in by Thursday, you can request a continuance? So where at least we'll know ahead of time that the possibility instead of, I don't know, I'm just trying to think outside the box there.
Right. Yeah, I think that this, this going in this direction, recognizing earlier that applications are not complete and that they should request a continuance if they don't anticipate having the items in by no later than that Thursday. I think that that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree, to your, to your point, Dennis. Well, Fran, I mean, you're doing a great job with what's, what's been going on here. I understand you are a one-man, one-person department there for quite, for quite some time, and now that we have Jess on board, which is fantastic, it's great to see that the, your department is building up again. And I understand with everything that's going on, working remotely, and that it's, it's tough. And it's going to be that for some time. I just think at some point down the line, this, this might hopefully steer us a little bit more towards getting this towards more of initial review when applications are filed, that makes sure that the applicants have everything in there because the last, it just seems the last few months of our meetings, we've been granting continuances left and right because material, some material was missed. And again, that's, that's to no fault. I mean, it is what it is, and I understand you guys were, you guys were completely, we were completely understaffed. And, you know, it's tough to keep, it's tough to keep up with that, understandably, but I'm just hoping that if we can start with this, this trend at least about making sure materials are in by the Thursday before maybe sending the applicant reminders, that'll lead us more to a path down the line where we can maybe start pushing this towards getting, having, having the material in there at the application, at the time of the application filing day, so we're not, we're seeing, so we're seeing less and less. We're going forward more with initial petitions at the initial hearing as opposed to continuing and becoming something.
Right.
That's just, but again, yeah, but, but, but again, again, you guys are doing, you guys are doing a fantastic job.
Yeah, so now that we're building up our staffing, I definitely think that we'll be able to keep a really close eye on each of our projects, just because each person will have a more manageable amount to do. Obviously, I was the only one staffing all the boards, so.
Yep.
It's tough, but yeah, I think we will do much better job.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. The, the chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, did you want to comment on any of this, sir?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, and by no means, this is not a criticism of any of our staff, but as an application comes in, whose responsibility is to deem that application as qualified? Or complete?
So will be ours, yeah.
All right, so, so I guess, I guess, I guess my next question would be, until an application is deemed qualified, why is it ever placed on the agenda? Why would it, I, I think it should only make the agenda once deemed qualified.
Yeah, so so I would say there have been definitely a couple of applications more recently that I've overlooked something. And then after I've gone through everything, when it's time for me to write my comments, I'm like, okay, there's a few things missing, which is my fault, but.
Okay, so, so essentially, what I was asking, you are doing that, and occasionally something, because of the heavy workload, something might fall through the cracks. That's why I said it's not a criticism. So essentially, that's what you're doing. You're reviewing all these to make sure that they're qualified applications.
Yes.
All right, well, wonderful job, kid. Really, you know, let's hire a few more people to assist you every day.
Yeah, we're working on it. We have Jess here now, and we have another on the way, and it's going to be a lot more manageable now.
Thank, thank, thank you for that comment, Mr. Briere, and thank you, Ms. Segliano, for, for the comments as well. Mr. Procop, Mr. Procop, do you have any comments or questions regarding this topic, sir?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I actually echo Mark's comments because I was thinking that Fran has been a one-person show for a long time, probably not taking any vacations trying to get this thing done. Yeah, but I, I think it's, it is important, and you mentioned something, Fran, that you can't update the agenda forty-eight hours prior.
Right, yeah. So per mass general law, the agenda needs to be solidified, and it can't be changed any sooner than forty-eight hours, business hours before the meeting. So we, if we were changing the agenda, we couldn't do so in a substantive way. Some, in terms of like public hearings, for some things, like if I were to add this discussion under other business, it wouldn't be a big deal. But in terms of a public hearing, we couldn't, for example, add another public hearing the morning of a meeting. That wouldn't be allowed, because we have to have a forty-eight hour period.
Okay, so if, so by us saying that if all the docs are not available by Thursday, we should continue them to the next meeting, that's too short a timeframe?
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not following the question.
What, we're saying that if you don't, if, if an individual doesn't have all the documentation by Thursday, that we should continue them for the following meeting and not the one for Monday?
Yeah, so if, if an applicant didn't have anything, had something missing, although we're going to just try to really do a thorough review to ensure that applicant, applications are fully and one hundred percent. do a thorough review to ensure that applicant, applications are fully and one hundred percent complete. Uh, but if they are missing something, then we, if they do not get that missing item in before that Thursday, then we would tell the applicant to request a continuance or the board could request a continuance.
I think to your point, Fran, you, you can't, you can't tell the applicant to do something.
Right.
Can't, uh, you can't really tell them.
I was just wondering because you said you can't change it. So I'm, I'm, I'm in the city business. I was with the Friday and Monday. So, um, I was just wondering if Thursday was enough time, you know, as a, as a, as a ZBA deadline that would give you time to say, this is not um, complete. We can proceed for Monday. I, I did, I was, that's just my thought.
Uh, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Proco. Uh, go, go, go ahead. Sorry.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to jump in. Um, so um, where this kind of raises a, a big concern is if there's a event like a, 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 a site in the neighborhood that is being shoehorned in and the neighbors are quite upset about it. And suddenly there's going to be, you know, twenty people on the Zoom call that are opposing it. If, if the documents are not complete and then we have a change in the agenda at the last minute. So I, I, I really think the, that uh, Mark has it, you know, solved if it's possible for the city to have staffing that can review documents completely when they're received two weeks prior to the meeting before, when they get in, that, that solves it completely. But in the event that something is missed, I think we still have to go ahead with the, you know, it, it, this, and I will say for the most part, it's not common that we're in this situation. It just seems like Fran, we did get into it more than average in the last couple of months, last month or so. But um, for the most part, I think it's really just looking at mistakes that happen and how we solve that. So we don't end up with seven things on the agenda and five of them getting continued, you know?
Right.
Right.
Well, Fran, just to clarify on your point about the uh, agenda fixing the, you know, amending the agenda. It's not, um, it's not amending, you're not amending the agenda if you're, I know you've done in the past, you've sent out updated agendas where the applicants uh, had requested continuances and noted that on the agenda. That's not, that's not changing. I don't believe that's changing anything. That's just.
Right. Nope. That's just like a note um, for something that was already added to the agenda. So if I were to, um, Jared and I would revise agendas all the time on a Friday before a meeting when someone had requested a continuance because they didn't have their updated materials in yet, and that's fine. Um, but it's, it's more of adding like a, a new public hearing or something of that nature would not.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And I just, that, that, I think that's a great practice, especially for the public too, because when we have it up on the website and someone wants to go, if they're, if, you know, someone from the public is interested in a particular project that's coming before it and they can look at the agenda and see that the applicant had requested a continuance. Uh, or, or maybe even requested or requested, you know, preliminary requested a withdrawal of the application. We still have to go forward with the here, you know, uh, you know, with the um, agenda, with it on the agenda and note that. Um, but that's, I think that's a good, that's still a great practice that I, 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 you know, hope that you guys can keep up with that.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Um, Mr. Proco and Ms. McCarthy and Mr. Callahan. Um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Nirobo, do, do you have any comments, sir, or any, any questions on this topic?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So I was looking at the, so Vice Chairman, I was looking at the, the main application for for this, uh, for the variance and uh, in as much as there's no, you know, they don't do time, they don't uh, define when this should be in the hands of uh, zoning board. There's, it indicates on the application that, you know, you know, two weeks prior to the, the, the hearing, you know, the abatage should have received their notices. And uh, the permit sign should also be posted fourteen days prior to the opening of the public hearing. So I would, I would, I would imagine most of the material is usually in place, you know, by the Thursday prior to the, to our meetings. Um, am I right in assuming that? You know, I see, I see, uh, Fran, I see you populate a lot of materials, you know, uh, you know, you know, as time goes by. So but that should serve as a guide, you know, fourteen days prior, most of, most of, most of the material should be, it'd already be uh, with the, with you, Fran, right?
Typically, yes, typically they are. So the only thing that I can think of is, is sometimes, so there have been some meetings recently where they're just flat open, something missing. Like I know on West Chester Street, um, the variance supplement was missing and they didn't have a site plan. Definitely shouldn't have placed that on the agenda and should have just, should have it ensured that they had all of those materials. But in other circumstances where the board has found that the, the, the application is incomplete, what happens is they'll have a site plan. Um, and I check, check, check off the box that they have a site plan, they have a certified um, plot plan from a land surveyor. It doesn't have all the elements that the board would like to see. So for example, topographic lines are not a straight, if you read the, the variance supplement, it's, it's part of like almost an optional um, part of it, but it's not its own checkbox. And so that's, I guess, where it gets a little bit hairy because I don't, I don't take a hard look at the site plan until I review it. Um, and that's a bit later on. And at that time, they may already be on the agenda. So that's the only thing I'm kind of grappling with is like, what is an incomplete application? Because I know that sometimes the board would like to see some things and, and they want more information, but that information isn't explicitly stated as being fully required on that, the application form, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, so in short, you're saying most of the material is usually um, posted on the, online. So I, I think, I think, you know, in, we, 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 I don't think it's, it's unlikely we're going to be held hostage by a petitioner because they didn't submit enough material. So I, I think there's enough buffer here, you know, uh, for us to be able to review the materials. And if they don't, if, if they don't provide insufficient, if they provide insufficient uh, you know, uh, material, then, you know, they, we have all the, the recourse to, you know, to move it ahead. So I think, I think, you know, based on the fact that you're getting more staff and uh, you, you'll be, you'll, you'll be updating the, the site, I think, I think we'll be okay. I, 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 I don't think we're, we're going to have a problem. So. Yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Nirobo. Um, you know, I, I just want to, I don't want to belabor this, this uh, topic. I, I just do, I do want to add in my uh, so this, this year, actually, I'll be on the board for ten years. Um, this year marks my ten year with the board. Um, so throughout, throughout that time of that period of, you know, I've, I've seen a lot of applications, a lot of uh, kind of a lot of special permits and variants and, uh, you know, it, it kind of goes in waves in terms of, you know, like what people submit and what they're missing. I mean, and, and, and the board members, I, I've been part, Mr. McCarthy's always been there since I've been there, Mr. Perrin. Um, you know, Mr. Callahan, you know, for the most part. And, you know, I, I always see it as, you know, it, for the most part, I think DPD, the city, um, they do a great job with, with kind of filtering and flushing and making sure that uh, all the applicants are up to par, up to standard when they're on the agenda. You know, at, at times, you know, this is spanning ten years, we, we might get an application where they're missing a uh, plot plan or landscaping plan, which, which are all kind of prerequisites to any app, application. And, you know, I, I, I don't want to belabor the issue, like I said, but as long as I think they, they kind of get that checklist at the initial application where they have all the required documents that they can move forward. And, you know, and the Thursday before, that little kind of preliminary, final preliminary deadline to, to getting last minute documents in, I think it's a kind of a good last minute timeframe. I think the only thing that's big for me um, is we, we need to get in, you know, by that, the applicants need to get in by that timeframe and it needs to be available to the general public. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're a government entity, we're, 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 we're a body, a legislative body that, you know, yeah, we, we view and we hear, you know, permits and, and grant variances, but we, we, we do this in tandem with, you know, the public knowing as well what, what we're reviewing and what we're seeing. So I think that, that's, that's the only big thing to me. And, and Ms. Sigliano, Ms. Wilson, I, you, you, you guys are doing a great job. I know you have a lot on your plate. I know DPD, you, you guys are not just dealing with, with zoning, you're dealing with planning, conservation, probably the license commission, maybe even a few other boards I'm not mentioning. So I, 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 my hat's off to, to, to all you folks in there. You guys do an amazing job. Um, you know, I, 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 I just think what we talked about in terms of the, the process of that last minute deadline of Thursday for any last minute documents, it's a good timeframe. And then, you know, we have to make it available to the general public as well as a government entity, a public body, uh, you know, and all that. So I think that, those are my comments. Um, I think this is a great discussion in terms of um, what's expected and what's required for materials and deadlines and documentation. Uh, so I think if, if we have no other comments on this specific topic, we'll move to minutes for approval uh, for the next item.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just, uh, not on this topic, on another topic. I, I'd like to raise a concern when we're done with this topic before we go to the minutes.
Okay, that, 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 that sounds good. So we're, we're done with the discussion in terms of the, uh, the other business item, uh, discussion around materials and deadlines and, and all that. Uh, so now we'll, we'll open it up to the board. Any other comments or questions um, people wanted to bring up?
Well, I, I, I have one, I have one thing. I guess it kind of, my, kind of ties in with the minutes a little bit, but maybe, maybe not of something that maybe, uh, it does, I guess, I guess it's a bridge between what we just discussed and with the minutes because it has to do with um, a project um, on one seventy-three Westford Street. My recollection and Fran, if you can look into this, my recollection of the last meeting, and I found it pretty particularly odd uh, when they were asking for a continuance, I thought the applicant had said that they hadn't paid the, uh, they hadn't paid the, the application fee. Uh, I found that very, I found that very odd. Uh, I kind of let it go, but I mean, um, but I found that to be odd if that's the case.
Yeah, this, this was, um, it was a long, sometimes we will take in an application with and, and people will say, you know, we'll, I have to grab my checkbook, we'll bring it tomorrow. And it really did that with that application get a bit out of hand, but long story short, we have the application fee. So it's all set. But that one was.
I, I, I could totally understand that. Uh, that just seems like an odd practice that we would put something on the agenda where they haven't even paid the application fee. Uh, and I'd hate to see a situation where we approve something that technically we shouldn't have because.
Right.
Shouldn't have been on the agenda. Uh, so I, just again, this, it's, just, I was just checking on that. Uh, no big deal. I'm sure, I'm sure it's, it's, it's a, no, one, once in a lifetime fluke apparently.
Uh, I was just double checking. Maybe you should start using Venmo or Cash App or something.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Um, Mr. McCarthy, uh, I just wanted to uh, give you the opportunity to, to uh, express any comments or concerns. Uh, I know you wanted to talk about some other stuff. The, the floor is yours, Mr. McCarthy.
Okay, I'll make this really quick. I wanted to make this a, a record-breaking meeting, but it's so far not so well. But um, the temporary signage, uh, we approved temporary sign for Cross Point year and a half ago, I think, or maybe two years ago. They're still up. I don't know if you could just kind of review that and see if there needs to be a, an extension for that. And then I don't recall temporary signage coming up in front of the board. I might have been sleeping. I don't recall it, but for Franco. So um, that project has a lot of temporary banners along the fence, but also has a lot of very, very large um, banners on the building itself. And I don't know if that is something that we should have addressed or was addressed, or maybe it meets zoning, but I don't see how it does in section six point three for signs. So Fran, if you could just look at those two or have someone in your, just kind of get back to us on those two projects for temporary signs, please. That's it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Um, if we have no other comments or questions, um, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, um, under other business, the minutes for approval for January eleventh, twenty twenty. Um, is there any, any comments, additions, uh, amendments or any, any comments regarding the minutes for January eleventh from anybody?
None from me.
All right, hearing and seeing none. Um, this, this, um, Mr. McCarthy, if you don't mind, but let's do a motion to, to approve the minutes for January eleventh.
Three, Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January eleventh, twenty twenty.
All right, um, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Callahan. Um, can I have a roll call for the minutes, please?
Vice Chairman, pack.
Uh, approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approve minutes for January eleventh.
Member McCarthy.
Pro the meeting minutes for January eleventh, twenty twenty.
Member Brier.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one. I'm sorry.
Member Proco.
Approve minutes for January eleven, twenty twenty-one.
Member Niroge.
Approve means for January eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
All right, uh, thank, thank you. Minutes have been approved. Um, and just, just as, as we were doing that roll call, I did notice a little clerical, clerical, um, mind the clerical thing with the minute. So uh, Madame Sigliano or, or, or Madame Wilson, if you could just look at that before we, on, on the agenda for tonight, just update it that, that we appreciate it. Um, so if, if there's no other comments or questions, uh, we'll, we'll move to uh, adjourn the meeting.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a uh, motion to adjourn.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn the meeting, second by
George.
George.
By, by, by Mr. Proco. On favor, say aye.
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 Anything, nay. All right, the ayes have it. Um, we're, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have, have a good evening.
Good night.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.